You're now live here.
Today, we have a case with the invisible man. I see right through him. Anyway, welcome to our meeting. I couldn't tell. All right, let's get started. Are we ready?
We are ready.
Okay.
You go ahead and do what you want to do.
I'd like to continue David Robey's hearing. And I understand, David, that you'll be...
I'll be playing the part of David Robey.
Okay, so why don't you go ahead?
I'm gonna pass... You just take one and pass it to the next person and... And I have to...
Well, has this been re-done?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It's a resubmission.
This is going to be a resubmission.
So, yeah.
I'm on the spot or so.
Okay, so you, sir, are on board.
And Rich Menge will not be in tonight.
Okay, so what do we have, one, two, three, four? So far. Should be enough. All right.
So basically, all I've done is changed this from a standard single lot subdivision to a lot size averaging subdivision. And I went through on the very back two pages and pick the... It actually comes out from the paperclip. I basically rewrote David's request and then I sent this to him and he okayed it. So what we do is asking for a lot size averaging subdivision, where the subdivided lot, where the board will reduce the road frontage to zero. And then there are a few other waivers in here that are... I tried to go through all the sections and just outline all the waivers. And then at the back, there's some proposed conditions of approval. These are, again, from directly from David's original application. And then there are some additions or corrections to the site map. And Vicki, there was one that you talked about last time. I thought I had it written down. I don't think I did, so there's another... I do need to try to remember what that one was. So looking at it as a lot size averaging, I went through the... And calculated the area of the lot based on the standard lot calculation by reducing the acreage for the... All of the conservation districts. And we still have... We end up with just over 29 acres. And the total road frontage is just shy of 1,200. I think it was 1,198. So there's plenty of road frontage for two lot subdivisions. There's plenty of acreage for a two lot subdivision. So I believe, from everything I can see, it was a... It qualifies for the lot size averaging. And then it was a lot of record prior to zoning, so qualifies for the freebie lot. So we'd look at... Like to look at it as the freebie without reducing the subdivided lot size by the conservation reductions.
Okay, so the... That's a little of a mind bender. So he's doing the lot size that... He's got the freebie, so he can do that.
Yeah.
He can have a... He can have the second lot.
Right, well, the second lot, the freebie, basically, the lot itself is just over five acres.
Right.
The proposed subdivided lot. And because it's close to the brook, it has agricultural soils, or as marked as agricultural soils. Although having a dump on it, I don't think it really qualifies anymore.
Right.
But if you subtract those out of that area, you would end up with less than five acres. So using the freebie lot, you then don't need to subtract those for that subdivision. And since it's going to be a lot that... There's no intention at the moment to develop. It won't affect the size of a building until somebody... If the board reapproves it as a developable lot at some future date, then if those are still part of the zoning, then it would kick in.
Is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
All right. So, does that cover your...
Pretty much, you know, other than I've listed out the waivers. I can go through them if you want.
Do we have a checklist or anything?
We have... I have...
I think today would be a wonderful day for somebody else to do the checklist. Who would like to do the checklist?
Whoever's hoping should do it.
You're so good at... Oh. Oh, boy, okay.
Age and experience.
Age. Names and addresses of each of butted by map and lot. Names and business addresses of every engineer.
Yep.
Topographic map?
That is a waiver. And the waiver is, again, because it is... Both these lots are intended to be non-developed or undeveloped or remain undeveloped. So there was no reason to spend the extra...
Okay, how's everybody on the board feel about that waiver?
And then it also goes back to the proposed conditions of approval. That neither lot may be developed for any use that requires on-site water supply or on-site septic system without planning board determination that such development satisfy all the requirements of line, zoning use regulations.
And that's under what?
That's under the proposed...
Conditions?
Conditions. And so, to me, that basically we're saying, you know, these are not going to get developed right now. There's no intention to it.
Yeah, I think that's a really bad reason. Maybe you could say because they're flat. And there's something because it's not intended to be developed. Where there's nothing in here that prevents it from being developed. I understand what the intent is, but, you know, if somebody else came in and said that, it's like, are you kidding me? Am I supposed to believe that? So can we say it's because, as you can see when you drive by, it looks pretty flat? And there's probably a development area that's flat enough to support redevelopment at some point that should be, ever be developed?
I think that's completely reasonable.
Can we say that?
Yep.
All right, so what is it we're saying? We're waiving it because?
Because as you drive by, you can see that there is a flat enough area to accommodate development on each lot. Yeah, there is some place that is flat enough to be developed. And in that, they are doing their freebie subdivision. They don't need to disclose the topography and the steep slopes and all that, so I don't care about that.
Yeah.
Not giving us topography, I think that's okay.
And hey, Ben. And I'd add... Can we add...
If you want a map, there's some sitting right there.
The findings.
Not that we know about.
Hope, smoke, and keep it that way.
So we're gonna have a bunch of findings. And one of them should definitely be that it's... It's a freebie.
It's the same map. Yeah, it's freebie, so we don't need to know about the topography or that. But also, we can see visually on each section that there is a flat area.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
I mean, I can... If you give me 10 minutes, I can give you a topography map.
I think we're okay with it.
I think we're okay with it. Thank you, Ben.
Does anybody have a problem with that waiver? Okay. Size per requirements of the graphing county registry of deeds.
So this is the whole conservation district map we're asking for a waiver. Again, the one reason is...
It's freebie.
Yeah, it's a freebie.
I think that's reasonable.
Okay, so this whole section B?
Yep.
Yep.
C subdivision layout map. If a lot sized average subdivision is planned, show the maximum number of lots that would be allowed.
Did not show the maximum. I did calculate the... He's asking for two, and that he could support the two that were... That are being asked for.
So I want to cross out not applicable, because this is a lot size average. So we know that at least two could be on there.
Yep.
So what are we saying? That we're giving a waiver because...
Because for a conventional subdivision, there's enough frontage and enough acreage to put two lots.
Okay. Size per requirements of graphing county registry of deeds.
Yep.
Scale no smaller than...
Yep.
Be prepared, signed, and certified.
It is.
Complete boundary is an area of entire parcel.
That's a waiver.
Yep. Well, does have...
Well, no, it doesn't have any northern meets and bounds on it.
Oh, I see what you mean, yes.
And also, I don't know that it has the frontage.
It did not have the frontage. That's something that I calculated.
But some survey, so... So that would be a waiver.
So that's a waiver because... Because the zoning administrator calculated the frontage from a what?
Well, there's a lot of frontage. It's not that he calculated. It's just there's definitely enough frontage for two lots.
Plenty of frontage.
Plenty of frontage. And then I don't know about what's going on in the north. I think we need to say where we don't... I mean, I think it's just the lot's so big, we don't need to have that. That needs to bound along the north survey.
North survey not necessary.
Yeah, I guess there's a section on the south, too, that isn't surveyed, but...
Okay, so why are we saying that's okay? Because we don't need it?
For the size of the lot, we're not concerned about knowing exactly where those are.
Enough info is shown.
Yeah, it's gonna need to be. I mean, assuming this is gonna get reserved, that whole thing is going to need to be surveyed. So...
Yeah, but we're working...
Yeah, for right now.
For right now.
Yep.
But we feel that there's enough information. Is that right? Is that... Does everybody feel...
Given the size of the lot, we can have the information not to have to survey the north and south.
Okay. Existing and proposed street, right-of-ways, lines, et cetera.
The only right-of-way, I guess I... Would be asking for a waiver on that one because the... One of the conditions is that the board will allow the applicant and the owner to figure out where they want to put the 10-foot easement for access. And that's under the conditions of approval.
So did you respect the state? Is there a permitted driveway entrance with the state?
I couldn't find one. Typically, the state, unless there is an actual driveway, I'm not seeing.
There is a... The old road. The old road is there, and actually, people drive in and out there, so...
So we're saying condition about agreeing where the accessway or the driveway?
Where the accessway to lot one, the subdivided lot.
Right, but you just make this as illegible as possible for David. Okay. Existing and proposed lot lines angles and dimensions. That's a yes?
That's a yes.
Location of existing and proposed easements, wells, blah, blah, blah.
That would be the same as five.
Okay, eight. Location of existing and proposed...
Not applicable.
Everybody agree that's not applicable? Okay. Location of existing and proposed utility?
I would say it's not applicable. That's what I put in the application.
How's everybody feel about that?
You know, there's no proposed utilities. There are power lines that run down the side of the road. I'm not sure which side of ten they're on. I think they're on the... That side. If I remember correctly.
The west side?
Yeah.
So do we want to say not applicable, waive it, or people don't want to waive it? What does everybody think?
My personal feeling, and that's what I put in the application, that it's a not applicable.
Okay.
There are no proposed utilities, wells, septic system, building, drives, parking areas, stormwater drains, drains, and none of those are proposed. And so the only existing thing would be the utility pools on the road. And I don't think that it has any bearing on... Could you have some more decisions?
Yeah, I think that's a not applicable.
Okay, everybody good with that?
Well, I do think there's a accessway on there. There's probably drainage lines, but I'm going to waive that because you better put something there that can go away.
So everybody is okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Location of zoning district boundary is blah, blah, blah.
I have that as one of the things to be updated on the map, to put a note saying it is all entirely within the rural district.
Okay, so I'll put no to come, or...
Yeah, that is it. The condition of approval.
Will be added. Okay, name, address, map, and lot number.
Those are all on the map.
Okay, site location map?
Yes.
Well, I just had a question. Can that Tim's... Did your land conserve that touches it?
Yeah.
So were they notified, forest society?
That would've been...
And then doesn't the Monchar Museum, were they on it?
Monchar Museum was notified.
Okay, good.
Well, no, I'm looking at... I went through it on the butted list, plus the applicants and the engineers. So they did not list the... But I always thought it was the easement holders for the property, not necessarily the ones that are abutting.
They were interested in land, but I just wanted to... Everybody owned property, three or an easement. So I think adjacent easement holders, too, they're notified, but anyway.
Well, do you want to add that as a condition?
The horse is out of the barn.
I mean, it is about a foot touching here. What's the pleasure of the board?
So what is the specific question?
Yeah, whether the...
The forest society was notified.
The forest society should be notified of their one foot.
You mean a continued hearing?
Well, that's the issue. And like I say, it was my belief that it's only easement holders that are... That hold easements on the property, the subdivided, and not abutting.
Well, it says right here, of every abutting owner of property, entry or an easement. So I...
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, I think that that's what that means.
Well, then what...
I mean, we can approve it and conditional on notification. And if they have anything they want to say, we can...
I think that's a good way to go.
Pick it up again in two weeks.
I can absolutely notice... Send them a letter saying the board approved this.
Yep. Well, the pending approval or something like that, so that their rights are violated.
Okay. So the site location, we did. All surface water on and within 200 feet. That's a yes?
Well, we've got plenty of rock.
But that... So we're good with a yes on that?
Yeah.
Property setbacks. Yeah?
No, I asked, the waiver is not applicable as, again, it was for the purposes of...
I'll just say same as...
And going back to the conditions that the board would have to approve any development, and that would include making sure that the appropriate setbacks are made.
Well, the zoning thing, really.
But, you know, it's still...
To take off the condition of no development, but is that... So approve the development. So...
Well...
It's fine the waiver appears, not, you know...
Here's a question. Why do we need the setbacks? Since this is...
Well, presumably to show that there is an area here where you could put something or to be developed if they come back.
Oh, to show that it's a viable...
Right, yeah, so that you've got a space that someone could put something on.
Do we want to say...
Well, it's 100 feet, right? Side setbacks and...
Side setbacks are gonna be 35 feet.
Okay, so and then from the... From the brook, it's about 100 feet from the brook. Yep. And like the... And then 35. Well, this has no front, right? Are these all sides?
These are all sides.
So it's 35 feet all around, so I think it's fine not showing.
Because I need to give a reason.
There's a lot's big enough that 35-foot setback, you know, would allow for a mover something to go there.
For 35... No, so a lot's big enough for 35-foot setbacks.
To accommodate development with the 35-foot setback.
All right. That's... So we're putting not applicable, okay. Right, or wait? Okay, final plan.
Yep, that'll be within 60 days.
Yeah, so that's automatically not applicable. I mean, we have... Or what do we...
I don't know.
Why do we have... Why do we have that?
I did not write this checklist.
I did not either.
That's to come.
Yeah, it's to come. Sorry, I was just saying.
There we go.
Known to come.
I mean, this is gonna need to be modified a little bit and then come back with all the changes in my form of...
Okay, lot size and density calculation provided worksheet.
That was a waiver? Again, because the... The condition of having the board come back if, for some reason, that this ends up as people wanting to develop, then they can come back and show the... Those calculations for what they want to do.
Well, this is the... It's the freebie lot.
It is a freebie lot, so...
So it's a freebie lot.
Okay.
And we can see that you can make two lots, given the frontage and acreage.
All right. Sewage.
That's an ask for a waiver. Because, well, one of the reasons, again, if they want to develop, they'll have to come back to the planning board and show that they can do sewage. So the condition of approval would require people to come back.
So...
Well, I personally have a concern about the five-acre lot if they want to come and develop that, because I'm not sure if they are in a non-hold dump area. They could...
It may sound like that they would have to show proof to the planning board that they could.
Right, I know, but it's... You know, and I know that this is one of the things that caused David great distress, was that, you know, maybe there would be a little bit of area that would be allowed on the bigger lot that if somebody wants to put a house here, you know, and needed a little bit of land to put their septic, they weren't preserving a house a lot for... So I don't know. So it's 5.1 acres, so it doesn't have to go to the state for subdivision approval.
Yes. So where did we land with that?
I mean, if somebody 30 years from now comes and is, you know, this is, you know, grandchildren have the dailies, you know, wants to put a house here, and they come and they ask us, and we have, you know, the... The planning board then is gonna have to say, well, tough luck, Charlie, because you can't get a septic system there. You know, then what?
So do we want to say that... What do we want to say?
Well, I think that you can get a septic system, you know, if anything, a pump system. A tank, tank system. Don't need to have a leach field.
So we're... They're hoping that technology will solve that problem.
Well, that would be a better... You know, but currently, they're, you know... Even if you couldn't put a leach field on that lot.
So is the problem we're having here is that the condition that nothing's gonna be developed without coming back? Is that what we're...
I'm having a hard time giving the owner of this lot unrealistic expectations about their ability to develop the lot, one. And two, I feel like we're dumping a problem, you know, conflict, on somebody in the future. And so my hope is that the technology will change so that it's not a problem in the future to get a septic system there.
But hope is... Hope is the thing with feathers, well, on a practical...
I'm just laying out how, you know, and I'm trying to be very neutral about the situation here and treat them like any other applicant that were to come in.
That's our job. So what would... What... Do you have a...
No, I don't. Because I don't know anything about this lot. I know nothing about the topography, except that I perceive that there's a flat area that, you know, and I know nothing about the soils.
So what would you need, or what would we need?
A generalized... You can pull up any generalized soil types. I mean, are they all tight clay soils or... Just in... You know, that this isn't all wetland? You know, I don't know. Something like that.
So you're saying that we need more information, because otherwise, we're taking it on faith?
Well, it's not... We're not... The problem is, for me, giving people unrealistic expectations, dumping the problem onto the planning board.
But what...
And that's the problem, you know? And if we don't have problems with that, then sure, let's just waive it, which is, you know... It'd be nice to know that there was something here, that this wasn't a wetland.
Right, so but I'm trying to get my head around it, so I can write it down.
A little bit of soil information would be good. And if David can pull that up on the DIS, then that would be excellent.
Okay, so let's wait for...
Take a look.
Let's wait for him.
And see that it, you know, based on graphing panel survey, and our best guess, you know, that it's not a, you know, like wetland soil. not a, you know, like wetland soil.
It's not egg soils.
It's like a lot of, is it, there's a drainage, there's a drainage area, right?
Yep, and then outside it drops this area, and here it, where it drops off.
So, it goes from this bend, right?
I, I think the issue is that we have to...
Majority of it, at least, areas are not egg soils, or the, or it's like the gray is not egg soils, these are...
What about, with wet soils, what's, I, it's okay for egg soils, but this is a freebie.
Um, the majority of it, I'm beginning, that, the majority of this area is not in egg soils, it's, uh, on the south, or the east side, it's a Dartmouth silk loam.
So, that's on the east side of, of Lot One, whoa.
Yep. And, uh, I think the other one is a Binghamville silk loam. Yep, it's a Binghamville silk loam, which is not hydrate. It's a local egg soil, and that's to the, the north and the west.
Uh-huh.
And then, I gotta see, I have north...
Doesn't this is in the egg soil?
Yes, it is, yeah, Dartmouth.
Okay.
I'm trying to see if I actually have the other soil types.
Well, that, that, those are, you think they'll lead to over there?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, the gray.
The Dartmouth silk loam only get up to 8% slope, so...
Yep.
So, that's, they're fine. So, I'm happy with...
Well, I'm trying, those are on the outside of the lot, or, you know...
Before you get into the center of the lot?
When you get into that center, I'm trying to, I don't have, I thought I had, but I don't have.
What's at the bottom of the ravine?
What?
What's at the bottom of the ravine?
Well, that's what I'm looking, I don't have, what I have is all the, we only normally deal with egg soils, so I've cut out all the other soil types, so I don't have to, and I thought I had it.
Is there a stream line down there, ravine, or is it too small?
Um, it does, when you get right to the, um, this point, um, there's a ravine that runs down along that line. I gotta get, we have a projector in that room, I want to get set up so I can project stuff on the screen and I can show you, I mean...
So, we've got Dartmouth soils which are well drained along the edge?
Yep, this is the area right in here, I just, I don't know what's in the center because I don't have, it's not a agricultural soil.
So, is that along the edge of that lot, or?
It's sort of in the center of the lot.
As you see the, the center of the, this would be the center of the lot, right there in that gray area.
The five acre?
Yep.
And, and it's got the Dartmouth soil, what do you...
On the, on the outside, it has the Dartmouth and the Binghamville soils.
If, can we reasonably infer that within that range there's...
Yeah, I would, I would say, yeah, based on the, you know, gross assessment of the soil, it looks like we can lead field on the smaller lot, which is more of a concern and there's plenty of area here in the larger lot, so I would say waive the, uh...
Okay, how shall I phrase that?
Uh, based on a gross assessment of the soil types on Lot One and the size of Lot Two, we feel confident without leaving sewage disposal plant.
There's a ten foot contourist.
Okay.
Yeah, it's flat.
Okay, and, and we're waiving this?
Yeah, it's not that it's not applicable, I don't think, because somebody might come back for a lot more at some point.
Okay, so is everybody good with that, I just want to make sure? Nobody has a problem, silence is a scent in this room, okay. In addition to locating the existing septic system and submitting a statement from a septic developer?
Let's, I asked for waiver for the entire section of the...
Oh, okay.
Nothing.
All right, surface water runoff.
Again, that was the one that was asked as a waiver?
I don't think we need, we need that detail yet.
Uh, not applicable or a waiver?
Um, I would waive that.
Because not needed?
Because we don't know where any development is proposed and...
No proposed, no, no current proposed.
And it's flat, you're not going to get much runoff or, or erosion.
Yep.
Might get the puddle.
I think it's kind of a moundy thing here. Where is that?
I don't know.
The house?
Is that in here?
Yeah, you see it, I mean, there's a little bit of a rise, but it...
If you look, this is the rise you're talking about.
Yeah, 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 what is that?
That is a, called a hill shade. I've taken all the lidar data and I can create this, basically what you do is saying the sun's here and it will shade everything so you can see where your, your elevations are.
So, how many feet of elevated is that from the surrounding, I mean, that looks significant and, I mean, it's noticeable, but it really isn't that significant.
Let me see what the, I can probably grab it.
Probably led that.
Wow.
That would be interesting, because there's no ledge anywhere else. Well, it's the rise up by where the entranceway is. I haven't seen it, I mean, I haven't seen any ledge in, you know, within a mile of this stuff.
Well, isn't it like...
It's all riverbed.
The little place here, you know, where you kind of duck behind a ledge to get to the house, there's some, right?
Down south, oh, yeah, there's that...
Right on them.
Yeah, there's that mound there, that's true, the dock there, yeah.
That's wrong, it doesn't matter David, I was just wondering if...
Well, if you hold on just a second, I can, it's just a matter of clicking on the right, um, layer to get the information along.
That is best, this was all riverbed at one time, it was Lake Hinchcock.
Yeah, I know, I know, I, I just wondered, you know, if it was partially excavated and not just the dump or some soil.
That outrise is at 442 feet above sea level and the surrounding area is about 436.
Huh.
Six feet.
What?
Six feet.
Yep.
So, I mean, it's noticeable, it's more...
The lidar data is great, I can, a lot of times I'll get people telling me I need to reference something to a stone wall, but I can't see an aerial photography, but I can see all the stone walls. I have, I can see the, the lines of headstones in the cemetery up here.
Oh, my gosh, really?
Yep.
Well, some of them are pretty high.
Yep, so, yeah, it, uh, it provides a lot of, yeah, I had somebody, they wanted to put a driveway in for a, through already open barway and a stone wall, I wasn't sure where it was, brought up the lidar data and I could see exactly where the, the right of the stone wall was.
That's a simple...
Okay, so, preservation of significant natural and historic features.
Well, I guess since that mound is not significant, we'll not have to preserve that.
So, we're...
Oh, you do have Clay Brook, which is, but it is shown on the...
It's not being...
Yeah, but there's nothing...
There's no, there hopefully will be plans for...
So, we're waiving this?
We've been told this is going to be conserved.
Well...
There are plans, yep, so, I mean, I'm...
So, we're, we're waiving this?
I think it's been, uh, no, I think they told us.
Okay, so that's a yes?
What the plan is, that they're going to conserve this.
Okay.
And whether or not they conserve it or not is like, you know, find, find your...
Yeah, I think it's, it's in the works, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
That's great.
Okay, title matters, most recent deed to the property is not on file with the...
We have that.
Okay, and all present are proposed, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, there's a, again, there will be a proposed easement of 10 feet to get into the property, but that is covered under the, um, proposed...
Conditions.
Conditions.
Okay, and finally, natural flood insurance.
Flood zones, the majority of the property is all non-flood zone, there's some areas, um, that are, the, the property drops off down to the Brook and so those areas are, um, down near the Brook are in a flood zone, but they're not an area where you could actually develop anything. There's no flat flood zones.
So, is that true for the parent lot as well as the new lot?
Yep.
So, we're waiving this in that it's, what, what do I say here?
Well, you've got an obligation to disclose that to the FEMA people, right?
Oh, yeah, if, if, I, I actually have to, if somebody asks to develop on flood, on the plane, um, there, there are a lot of rules that you have to go through as far as your design. And I, you know, this, looking at the, where the flood plain is on this, it's just all very steep, banks dropping down to the river.
So, if I put waived because, um, developable areas are not...
Not within the flood plain, or within the flood zone.
Okay.
It's an area that they have not defined well either.
Well, do you want to...
No, it's FEMA, they, they have, uh...
Well, let's call them up.
Yeah. Basically, they tell you the, the flood elevation and, you know, so you know where your development would be and they don't even, for this area, they don't have any flood elevation defined, so...
No development left?
Yeah, well, we have to...
All right, so I'd like to make a motion that the checklist, um, shall I say, is complete with conditions and, because we have a final plan to come.
Put some modifications to the plan.
With, with some modifications, or, or with listed modifications to the plan?
So, the one, one thing that you think is what you brought up last time is the, the map inset?
Yep.
The highlighted...
Yep, yep, David's got that on his list of things, modifications.
The, this plan came from the original subdivision plan that David submitted quite a few years ago and never went through with it.
Okay.
And that included an area, it was a, a lot size averaging subdivision where the lot was, uh, smaller than five acres. And so you have to show an area that you, or you have to put an area of open space that is equal to the area that you're reducing the lot size by. And so what that, um, the area that is up to the northwest of the, the lot, that would have been that area of open space that was being set aside to make up for um, and that went away, but they forgot to take it off the map.
Okay, Your Honor.
Okay, so, um, I'd like to make a motion that the checklist is complete with noted modifications?
Yeah.
And waivers?
And waivers.
And waivers, and just another kind of aside, I would say that the lot, on note number two, the Lot Two boundary information, I should say, so the boundary information, some of it is, is from surveys, so it's just the Lot Two information, maybe inconsistent with boundary information, so just to change that one little bit.
And that's on Lot Two?
Well, it just, note two should say Lot Two boundary information, because Lot One is fully surveyed.
I think that was the other one that you had said last time that I had...
Oh, okay, yep.
I really don't remember.
All right, so there's a motion outstanding, is there a second?
All seconds, uh...
Ricky seconds? Uh, all those in favor, say aye. That's, was that an aye, so that's everybody? Okay, nobody opposes, so we have a checklist. So, we should have a whole, quite a few findings here. So, we've established that the, the parent lot has over 600 feet of road frontage? Right?
Or, um, you wanted to say parent lot qualifies for...
Has enough road frontage.
Or has enough road frontage and acreage for lot size averaging?
Yeah, yeah, that's better. Let me know when you're ready. Okay, um, this might be redundant with that phrasing, but the parent lot could be just so subdivided into lots, meaning the lot size, road frontage, and that ratio requirement set forth in Table 5-1, et cetera. Is that redundant now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We know from, I don't know whether we need to put it in there, but lot size averaging definition includes modifications to road frontage, which is what we're doing. I don't know whether that's relevant for the freebie, but...
It doesn't matter to me what you, you know...
Okay, I, I think that's probably not necessary to put in there.
Well, the freebie still has to have dimensional control, so it is important to put in there, the freebie just could, um, exonerating having to do conservation district reductions.
So...
So, the fact that it's still important that the, the frontage be acknowledged.
Okay, so, so the lot, uh, the lot size averaging definition, um, includes modifications to road frontage? Yeah, page 10.
You read, you read that, okay, okay.
No, I don't...
No, 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 I just didn't...
I'm going to do a dramatic reading from page...
Do you want to just make it a statement that the planning board has, um, reduced the, the requirement of the lot?
Yeah, minimum lot size or dimensional criteria, frontage is a dimensional criteria.
Right.
Yes, that's a true statement.
So, I would say what the, one of the findings is the board has reduced the lot set, the road frontage for that lot to zero.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I think that, say, you know, we, we didn't do that arbitrarily, we have the authorization, referred the definition. Now, this is the one that I, well, I'll, I'll come back to this. Um, this is consistent with, and this is going to the, um, lot size averaging definite, this is consistent with the, the most appropriate use of the land and to allow land use patterns which preserve agricultural soils and to preserve the natural and scenic, I can just give you this language.
Yep.
And scenic qualities of the open land in the town for conservation recreation, that's 511 D1, just because I want to have a record of, we're not just doing this as we feel. Um, and then, does it even matter, I mean, it says, one thing I wrote down as a possible finding is applicant intends to conserve a property which consists of excellent attic soil. I mean, that's true as a finding, I, is it relevant?
You think it puts a cloud on the value?
All right, I'm finding, I'm not...
I don't know when they're assessed, when they're getting this, I mean, I'm assuming that it's, they will do the appraisal after the subdivision and if any, say, stuff like that, then they're valued.
Well, from, from the, my, my point of view on, you know, from the planning board, being on the planning board, is that the... Well, from, from the, my, my point of view on, you know, from the planning board, being on the planning board, is that the intent is, is, there can be all sorts of intents, but.
Well, you wanna, so you want to state what's being attempted then?
I don't know, I, I, I don't know that we need to, but. Happy to skip it, okay. Conditions.
So we don't mess it up for that?
Approval of the two, I don't know, I don't know. What, what are the conditions? You have some conditions.
I have.
So yours is different than the ones David has written?
No, they're not.
Okay, so you only have two, you have two and he has three.
What was the third?
Well, let's go through your two, and maybe you've covered the third. The deed for lot two shall reserve to the owners of lot one and ten foot right away along mutually agreed upon.
I, I combined that into the first.
Yeah, that's what I thought you did, is. Okay, well, the first condition approval, so we already allowed that reduction, right? By doing that, so that's not really a condition of approval, group of just allowing another lot averaging.
Yep.
Right, so I don't, I think the first part I could go away.
Absolutely.
And the deed for lot two shall reserve for the owners of lot one and ten foot right away along mutually agreed by owners of one and two. Okay, can I just say something?
Please.
What if they can't mutually agree to a right of way?
Then the planning board will choose it.
Okay, okay, and then, so if, in the event a mutually agreed upon right of way cannot be established, the right of way will be laid out by the planning board?
Yep.
That.
Yeah, I can.
I mean, I, I just, I know that some land trusts get very, very particular, and some right of way layouts might make no sense at all to the owner of lot one.
Yeah, I think that's a very good point, and we should have a remedy.
And so there's, I think there should be two, because it could be that they would never agree, and therefore lot one would never have access, and that's not what we intend by doing this.
That's a very good catch.
Well, you wouldn't need, yeah, it could be a family member for that, but, like, well, yeah, you get this, but never going to agree to a, a lot so.
You don't want a family on your land. Good God.
You know, but you, you can see where.
Yeah, yeah, of course, of course. So, is that, those are the two conditions?
Yep.
And then you, then you have the additions already spelled out, additions or corrections?
Yep. I just, just a clarification of the reference to the right of the north arrow. If you look at there, there's a reference just to the right of the north arrow that. But what does, is, there's a reference, but it doesn't really.
Yeah, I, I didn't get that.
Yep, so just, I would like to, if it's the, the north arrow.
Well, presumably the surveyor surveyed knowing where north was, because they, because they put meets and bounds, and the north arrow were aligned with what was surveyed. So it just is kind of sloppy, I, I mean, which, why would they need to refer to another plan in order to establish their meets and what, I don't get that. So they, equally, they could just reorient the north arrow so that it was, you know, aligned with what this may show us.
I will ask for the surveyor too.
Yep, and that's, who knows, they could have just left that there for the reason.
Right, there's, I, I'll check back to the, the last plan too, that, because it was on the last plan, and see if it makes any more sense, or like, make more sense of it.
Okay, so can I just play devil's advocate for the second condition? That any use that requires onsite water supply, so what if lot two, they want to grow strawberries, and they want to go well to irrigate those strawberries? So that means they're going to come back to the planning board, and we're going to say, yes, agriculture's permitted to use, and that's fine for your strawberries, right?
Well, I think that, that would be appropriate, because depending on where you're going to put the well, you're going to need to bring in utilities.
Right.
You're going to need to be.
Okay, so I'm just saying, you know, one scenario, so what if then somebody comes in for a septic system on lot one? And our minimum lot size is changed to ten acres, and they're stuck with five acres, are we going to? I mean, because this is a legally created lot.
But that would be all over town.
Yes, that would be all over town, I'm just saying, it says all requirements of land's land use regulations can affect at the time, so it's not this time.
Things are bound to change.
I know, so maybe we want to.
Maybe we want to say at the time of the, of the subdivision approval.
At the time of this subdivision approval?
Yeah.
Because then we just, they need to go back to what our rules were now, so I just want to be, because that.
These are, these are things that can, that if, if we don't address, can really come back to haunt people later, so I think it's great. So do we want to say that? Do we want to make it current? So that that doesn't become an issue, or?
Well, I guess the only thing is that.
Well, it could probably have a lot, could be a two acre lot.
Well, actually, I think that's more likely.
Yeah. Can we say something like acknowledging that this is a legally created lot? And then this is then, you know, legal non-conforming lot, which makes it, you know, legal. I mean, that, that's the only thing, I don't want them to be disqualified if the lot size changed, we're working a little bigger, or something like that.
Well, I mean, right now, we have legal non-conforming lots that we, you know, we just treat, if, if there are remedies for zoning board, if there are, are issues.
Right, but this says they have to come to the planning board to determine that the development, you don't go to the zoning board for relief, and so.
Well, I, I would argue that if it satisfies the requirements of land use regulations, if there is something that does not satisfy it, and they go to the zoning board and get relief for it, now it does satisfy it.
Well, maybe we should take out the planning board, then, and then if they, so they can just go to the zoning board and get their relief. I mean, you know, just that, without, you know, without.
Well, I, I think the, the idea was that you, the planning board has waived certain.
Yeah.
Items, and you waived, one of the things you waived is a septic. So you're saying this lot, we're going to waive it, you don't have to show a septic. Somebody comes and purchases a lot two, says, I want to put a house here. The planning, that makes the plan, puts it back on the planning board to say.
It, basically, it, it leads from, from this step to that step in terms of the subdivision.
You're saying going back and making, you know, dotting your i's and crossing your t's on the things you've waived. But on the, the flip side of that, if you take out the planning board, and just say the development satisfies the requirements of land use regulations.
Yep.
Then it will lead to the, the regular path that you have now. So, all right, the, the board has said, yes, you can subdivide this land. If somebody comes in the future and says, we want to put in a septic, and there is no soil that is, or no ability to put a septic there, then, you know, it would be the, the same as the board looking at it tonight and saying, there's no ability to put a septic, you can't do the subdivision. You know, it's, it's going to lead to the same conclusion.
Okay, well, I'm just wondering, because what we're essentially saying is, we're not re-subdividing this lot, so why come back to the planning board? What we really want is for it to be zoning compliant, which is what you do when you do development.
Right, I, I don't think there's any reason, you know, I don't think, you know, I understand, you know, if you were telling people you can subdivide a lot. There is an expectation that the planning board has thoroughly looked at this and said.
Yep.
That this lot is developable. In this case, you're saying, we waived those rights, but under this condition, and rewording it, taking out the planning board. Any development has to satisfy the land use regulations.
Right.
So you're acknowledging that you waived those, and that in the future, that those will have to be met, and I think that's perfectly fine.
Okay, so I feel more comfortable not having them have to come back here, because we don't really have criteria, we can't, we can't get more frontage. And, you know, they either get a septic that's going to be state compliant, or sound compliant, or they can't. And I don't think that's a zoning issue more than a planning.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Okay, so is that okay with you, that doesn't go back to this board? That we're just creating a problem for some other administrator in the zoning here?
You can't solve every problem in the future.
No, you can't.
So let's just go. Okay, so we're, we're doing that? David, you, you like that?
I'm perfectly fine with that, I don't think David will be, you know, I'm, I'm going to clear all this stuff through him.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
He's already coming back, but.
Anything else?
Well, we're, we're going to, I, I don't have any.
Okay.
But we have to kind of condit, kind of approve it.
Yeah, well, that's what my next question is, how, how, what, what should the, how shall I move the approval?
Approve it with those two conditions.
Yeah.
And with the understanding that the approval is not effective until proper notice has been given to the forest society.
Well, that's, isn't that one of the conditions? Oh no, that's a different, okay.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, yeah, so the, what Vicky said is my motion.
Right.
But do we, do we have to also have something, David might look, you know, talk to David, the other David might talk to this David and say, well, no, I don't like this, so.
Well, then he, he'd come back.
Okay, so it's just a straight out approval?
Yeah, I think it's straight out approval, I don't think, I don't think there's anything here, I, my, when I talked to you, my concern was if there was a huge change, you know, if you said, no, we want to have road frontage and reserve it, or you, we want the right of way put in, then I would have asked you for continuance, but these are minor changes that I, I. You're, you're comfortable with it. I think David will be comfortable with it, I won't guarantee it, but I will.
Most applicants don't get to tell the planning board what their conditions are.
You're not kidding.
So I'm not sure that this applicant should either, you know, just.
The applicant can, can tell you what they want for conditions, but.
You'd be surprised how many lawyers try to tell.
Oh, really?
At least the zoning board, what the conditions and what, what. Give them actual language for, I don't know how many times I've had them.
Yep, well, that's.
Well, they can do it.
Can be helpful.
They can do it, yeah, it can be helpful, but, but it's our responsibility to.
This zoning board does not like that at all.
Yeah.
All right, so as just discussed, that's the motion I'd like to move.
With the two conditions effective after legal notices can be given to.
The forest society.
Forest society, and I guess with the understanding that if they wanted to be heard, it would have to continue to hear until they, they ordered it, right?
Okay, so in your best interpretation of what we worked for, is there a second? I see Eric as the second here. All those in favor, aye? Are you and I?
I'm going to say two.
Are you abstaining, please?
Yes.
Okay, so three, one, one, two, three, four, and one extension. All right, passes. The minutes. About the forest service. Per inch, how much power do they have?
It's not power, it's just they've got a legal right to be notified.
Oh, oh, it's the forest society, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's.
Point or a foot or a.
It's about, it's a point, I think, really.
It's touching, it's touching.
It's sure?
Well, who knows, we didn't get, you know, a survey to show us how much it's actually touching, so.
It does touch.
And we're waiving that requirement, so, you know, if David wants to argue that it's not touching, right, show us the survey, but it's not.
No, it does touch.
Okay.
Just play a.
I can see the, yeah, grid is that north.
Things down here is not normal, like, not that buttered that a lot of control over projects.
They, they don't, because the board has the control, just the board sometimes gets.
Listens to the body.
Sometimes they do. Yep. And, I mean, we have gone through our regulations and determined that this is compliant with regulations, so the forest society would need to tell us that we are interpreting our regulations incorrectly, and. Which, you know, they, they could or they couldn't, you know, I don't know what to say, but they have a legal right to be able to say something if they want to. And hopefully they would learn about the backstories, that the intention is to conserve this lot, but that's not part of the, the work we're doing.
So, Rich, I just want to, you're abstaining because?
So, a couple things. I'm concerned that the board was waiving a number of criteria for. Being very generous to the applicant, let me just say it.
So why didn't you say anything about it? You, you voted in favor of the.
Waivers.
Of the waivers and, and the, the being complete, so it seems. You know, I think you owe it to the board, if you're having problems, not afterwards to abstain from the vote, you're here to present what your concerns are, and I don't think you did it.
Well, I'm a very unpopular person, because I bring up what I'm thinking about all along, and it caused everybody headaches, and I really don't like it. I wish more people would speak up about what their concerns are, because that's why we're here, we have a diverse board with different perspectives, and we all have to be knowing that we're working for the benefit of the town, interpreting the regulations to the best of our abilities.
So I, I would have liked to hear what you said, and not have it come out as an extension after, at the time of the vote.
I guess one of my concerns is on asking David Rogers to do as much work as he's done for the applicants.
David, I mean, I, I asked David about that.
You know, I do look, or consider that I work for the town, work for the residents of the town when I can help, especially if somebody has had some medical issues. You know, I will try to step in, you know, do what I can. I did not, the, the amount of work probably was a total of a half hour to do the research, and, which I probably would have ended up having to do anyway, because, you know, in most cases applicants don't have the resources that I do, so I ended up doing it for them anyway. So I didn't feel that it was a stretch.
A short amount of work.
Right, it was, it was not, it didn't take me very long to, to get it done. Just to retype up the, the majority of the wording in the notes that came from David, going through, asking for the waivers, I do that for every applicant anyway. And so all I did this time was copy down out of, directly off the checklist into a word document, so it was not a.
Danny and Millie had come in by themselves about David Rogers, well, we would have done a lot more.
I would have done a huge amount.
That may be true, I, I, I will create that.
Yep, and so I do, you know, yeah, I do feel that I work for the residents.
Okay.
And so I do try. And so I do try very hard.
That's the danger of this one, I think, as David has been involved, you know, the focus goes on him instead of the actual...
Mm-hmm, right. So I will take your advice to heart, Vicky, and I will work on being more, more vocal in the concern.
I, I don't like it, myself, I feel terrible, that they, you know, especially when a person has heart problems around it, and, you know, but I also feel like, you know, that's, otherwise, that's what I'm here for, is to raise those questions.
Well, I mean, anybody on the board, everybody on this board at one time or another, and, and you've certainly not been shy in, in many times in presenting your objections, so I really don't understand why you abstained and why you didn't speak up and you voted for the things you didn't like.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I'm not asking you to think of things that you object to for the sake of that, but I'd ask you to be consistent in, if you have an objection, please bring it up at the time.
That's fair.
That's all.
Yeah.
I mean, I, this, I don't even, I just want us to be, to be able to have everybody involved and for people to feel free to, you know, like, just like what you did, we could have done that during the case, you had a concern about, you know, the representation, and apparently you had concerns about some of the waivers, even though you voted for them, but that's when we should have been digging into that, and, and maybe you would have changed some minds.
Okay.
Okay? Anyway, I appreciate your, your listening to that.
I think also, you're really not supposed to abstain unless, you know, you go like, "You know, I just got off the plane, and I can't think straight," you know, something like that, you know?
Okay.
Or, you know, you weren't here for, you know, the meeting, so you're not voting on the minutes, you know, so I'm abstaining because I wasn't here, you really, you don't get it at all.
These are good points.
And if you don't get it at all, that means that there probably at least another person in the room who doesn't get it either, and you need to ask those questions.
Exactly, and I think...
So, that's, and David's here as a resource.
And, and I'll, I'll give you an example of that, that I've experienced many times, and, you know, and, and Vicky does stick her neck out a lot, and there have been numerous times, and you'll be surprised to Vicky, where, you know, I had thought, but she convinces me, I never would have thought of that, and it's possible the same thing would happen, so it's to all of our benefits.
Okay.
All right, we need to do the minutes.
Speaking of minutes. I have one change, this is the minutes for the seven twenty-two meeting, yes. First item, first line, the words "for A" appear twice.
I missed that.
You got it, I'm missing where that is. Item one, continuation of Ray Clark, almost like plan... There it is, four A, four A. Yes. That's it.
That's it? Anybody else got one?
I didn't have any.
Wow. All right, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to move the minutes as amended by Rich.
Who seconded that?
Rich beat you to it.
Okay.
Rich seconded it. All those in favor? Okay, it passes unanimously. So I'd, I'd like to get back to our solar situation.
It's too hot today.
Too hot for solar. So, next, next meeting is the year, is the...
No, next meeting is Ray Clark is coming back.
September ninth.
In September.
In September, okay. So I spoke to David, and it's difficult, it's difficult to come up with definitions. One thing I was thinking that might or might not make things easier, David said that, that the solar, the accessory-use solar systems are functioning well under the current definition of structure, and we had one discussion, I think you raised the issue, of not wanting to make it harder.
Right.
So, I don't know whether that's, you know, we can get into that whole thing, but I wonder whether we can separate out the commercial applications from the accessory-use applications and, and say something like, the accessory-use solar, whatever one of them, solar energy systems for accessory use shall be treated, shall be defined as a structure. Is that, is that...
They are a structure.
Well, they are, and that's how they're being treated now.
Yep.
Would, would that, I, I just, I can't think wide enough about that.
Well, you, you brought it up right there, use and then structure, right? So if it's an accessory use, it's allowed, and it just needs to meet conventional control.
Right.
If it's a different use, not an accessory use, but a primary use, and its primary thing is solar production, you know, for forical purposes, a different use.
Right, exactly, so they're differentiated.
Yes.
And, and then, so if we can, if we can kind of have that at least as a holding hand for the accessory use stuff, and maybe that's all we need to say, and then separate out the other use, and that we're gonna have to define.
Right, for commercial. The only thing I would ask in that is, the, the big question is lot coverage, or coverage of a solar panel, you have, you know, what you consider rack-mounted systems, where you have several, you know, posts in the ground, and you have an array of solar cells...
Right.
Or solar panels there.
Right.
That's pretty clear, you know, you, you basically will look at the, the area, even though it's at an angle, you know, you need to figure out what the, the actual area is. But when you have something such as one of the tracker...
Right.
Coming up with the, the amount of lot coverage to use and say, you know, how does it meet the dimensional control? That's the, the one question that keeps...
Elevated, right?
Well, it does, it's, it keeps moving, well, the, the thing is, if it's windy, you're gonna be using up a lot of area, because if it's windy, it's gonna be sitting like this, if it's snowing and raining, it's gonna be like this, so it's weather dependent.
So you've got to have an maximum size of, of its track.
Yeah, and, and that's... And what's the point of being concerned about the lot coverage? I know for a building with a roof, or, or driveways, or whatever, town has said we want two or twelve, whatever percent in various, in various districts. And that's for, for your surfaces, and it's for a lot of, and what's the point? What's, what are we trying to limit? What are we trying to...
Well, let's think about, let's ask, yeah, let's ask that question.
Well, why is it okay for Eric to have solar and I can't have a shed? You know, it's the same lot coverage.
I just want to throw something out.
Okay.
Giving a preference to technology that creates climate change.
You're increasing climate change for the energy used to build your shed.
What if I have my shed and I put roof mount on my shed?
Mm-hmm.
You know, and that's what I want to have rather than a pedestal system, you know, just because I can't put it on my roof or my house or whatever, I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Well, why should I be penalized because I can't put it on my house? If I could put it on the roof of my house, I would have.
Well, then I think you should be able to have a shed as well as a pedestal, to put your solar on, it's, it's a mountain solar, you know, that's...
Well, I think that, that's where we're going into the, the whole lot coverage issue, which again, that if you have a rack-mounted system, then that has a fixed lot coverage. In many cases, the pedestal system, not all of them, but in many cases, the pedestal systems, if it is a tracker that moves, it, it varies its amount of area.
Why wouldn't you go with the maximum of the track?
Well, what's, going back to what the purpose of...
If you're talking about lot coverage, and that, that area has the greatest lot coverage, would cover all of its...
But one of the reasons for doing this is to, you know, prevent too much stormwater runoff, you know, one of the reasons behind the lot coverage, you know, you're trying to, you know, keep the, the scale of all the buildings, so in your case, scale, it makes perfect sense to use a large, in the case of worrying about stormwater, when it rains, these things go vertical, and they have a very, very low profile, and they're not really running them at...
Except based on that.
So I, that's...
I think clearly, one of, you know, what, to, to what a general thing I just said, there are gonna be issues like this that we're gonna have to address, and one of them is lot coverage and how to define, but my colleague here is gonna kill me if he...
No, I just wanted to throw out, I'll premise that by, by saying that I'm completely supportive of, of solar panels, but I think a lot of people view solar panels not the same way as buildings, in other words, I can, I can see, foresee some problems, if, if somebody wants to put a bunch of solar panels right in somebody else's view share, I can, I can see issues, and I don't have any, you know, I don't have any solution for that, but I just, I can see down the road, there's gonna be lawsuits or whatever, so I just think we have to...
Well, let's, so let's, let's just walk, walk through, like, an example, we're talking, right now, we're talking about accessory uses, we're not talking about commercial, right?
Right.
So let's say somebody wants to put up six ground-mounted systems, and it's...
They're big.
They're big, and they're, they're right in their neighbor's...
Right, the neighbor's looking right down through their...
So, so my question is, what, what, what do people feel? Like, it's our responsibility as a planning board, we're always weighing the benefit of the property owner to the, the town and the neighbors, so...
Right, right now, that's allowed, right? Because we're considering the buildings.
Right, it's allowed, it's any other building.
Right.
Structure.
But I guess my point is that, you know, this, I'm not serious, totally true, but if somebody were to build a barn, or shed, or whatever, in somebody's view, they're not probably gonna be too upset, but if they start building a lot of ground-mounted, you know, there's a difference, people view it as a different thing.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say a couple of things, one is, one thing for lot coverage is you can say it's just the size of the pedestal, where you've got, you know, I'm just gonna say this is an extreme, I'm not sure I believe it, or...
But actually touching the ground.
What touches the ground exactly, and so for the ground-mounted array where they're sloped, there's footings, and they're, you know, as big as they are, and I don't know how big they are, and so their lot coverage would be relatively small to the size of the panel.
Sure.
So, I mean, that's, that's an extreme.
But I think that's...
And that, and I...
That's not what he's talking about.
Well, I think it's a concern, well, this is what I understand you to say, I mean, if I decided, yeah, I'm gonna put ten panels, and it's like...
Right, in somebody's face, yeah.
And you, you see them, and if they, they're, they're a problem, so this is something we've got to...
You know, I don't have the, I don't know how to...
Well, that's what we've got to...
So the other way to define it would be the area needed for home roof, if you've got puts up a thousand panels so I can sell it onto the grid, might...
Yeah, no, that would become commercial, that wouldn't be an accessory use anymore.
But where's the line? Good way.
Okay, so, Dan, if I have three Teslas in my driveway, I'm gonna need a lot of solar panels, and all I have is a house, like, so what you're saying, then, then I can't...
Sell through the Teslas.
Right, well, no, that, I thought, you know, just like, you know, talking about it, I think more and more people are becoming reliant on electricity for their power needs, which is what we've been trying to promote, actually, and so now that I don't use my oven, it's usually a gas oven, I use an electric oven, and now that, you know, like, you need that convergence, your heating and your car, people are gonna need more solar panels.
I'm gonna pass, here's a quick cut I made of looking some definitions for solar, and one of the things that, down near the bottom, I don't have this done alphabetically, I have this, my program, Mary, did this, looking at, starting at the top, you know, defining solar energy, and then the panel, the racking, and so kind of building out, and if it goes into the zoning, it would have to be alphabetically, but if you look at the onsite solar energy system, that's the, kind of a definition for saying this is a system that is used, that all the energy is intended to be used onsite. Now, I think net metering could be included in that because you're reducing your cost of energy by selling it back to the, the utility during the day, and then it offsets your total cost, so I would consider net metering to be onsite also. And then the commercial solar energy system is the utility scale facility.
So what about three families that get together, and only one of those families has an appropriate site, but all three families want to share in the, you know...
That would have to be another definition that I have not come up with yet.
Yeah.
So, you know, I've, yeah, but that's, that's acceptable, too, you know?
So, so we need to define lot coverage, and we need to define the, the line between, what you were saying, the line between what's personal use and...
Right, so if, if David has the nice lot for solar, and I get an easement on David's lot, put my solar tracker, is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, well, I'm just asking.
Yeah, well, that's, right, very good question.
There's a question, and I have proposed a solution to this, I think we have a really good opportunity, we need to have, to come up, September night, like, the energy chapter, I don't think there's gonna be any particular discussion of the energy chapter, I mean, we'll get up, we'll say a few words, we'll say, this is a considered wisdom of the energy committee and the planning board, and so just want to say, this is our opportunity to get feedback from people in town to say, you know, are they, are they, do they share Tim's concerns, like, heck no, I don't ever want to see those things anyplace, anywhere in town, or is, or, or what I think I understood you to say, Vicky, that Hanover has decided solar is beautiful, and, you know, it's either permitted use or a right, or it's not a very big hurdle. Where does the town on this come down on this?
Well, if, if you look at the town meeting a couple of years ago, the town spoke, and they said that they, they are very for renewable energy sources and want to reduce...
Yeah, and I think, I think that was incorporated in the...
It was incorporated in the energy chapter, by saying, you know, that's a pretty big statement by the town.
Everybody is in favor until they're put right in front of their, you know, their view, that's the problem, it's just like zoning, everybody wants zoning until it stops with doing this.
Well, this is the same, we're having the same issue with senior housing at Fort Muncom, where all of a sudden the butters are saying they don't want their backyard, right? And it's kind of going on us to say, well, this is where we said we wanted, this is where the town said we wanted, so...
You know, and that's one of the reasons to go through the master plan and put the, the energy chapter in the master plan before any zoning changes, because that is, you know, you, you had the resolution in town that says, "We want better, you know, renewable energy options," the energy chapter says, "The town wants better renewal, and now here's..." And so I think, you know, there, there is going to be, there are going to be people who are unhappy with seeing solar panels in their neighbor's yard, but the, the reality of the situation is that...
I'm unhappy with the guy who's rolling cold a truck down in front of my yard, and there's nothing I can do about that.
Yeah. And, and so, I mean, I think this is our opportunity to say to people, we could go to really hard... Right. And, and so, I mean, I think this is our opportunity to say to people, we could go to, really hard to install a solar array anyplace, to oil.
We're not gonna do that.
I, I think we need to tell the town, you need to-
It's in the chapter that we're supposed to-
No, I mean, we're just, we're not gonna make it. But, 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 but there's, but there's a lot, you know, it's, it's a question of, what's the play between nothing and something?
Yeah, wall pole has some things in here, like, whenever possible, a practical, freestanding solar photovoltaic system should be positioned with a high consideration to neighboring properties, use of natural materials, screening to neighboring roadways, et cetera. You know, they have that in there that-
But that, that's all feel-good language.
And you have layer-
When it comes down, down to enforcing something like that, it, it becomes a judgment call on the administrator or the, the board that has to approve it to say, you know, this is-
I think that the thing that was put before the town two years ago was a very general statement.
Yep.
And if it was presented as, if somebody put this array up in your backyard, how would you feel?
Well, again, I think Rich has a very good point that-
I think what, what we need to do is, we know that people are in favor of this. I think everybody on this board, to one degree or another, is in favor of it. But it's not unreasonable to look for a, a reasonable balance, and that's what we're gonna have to come up with.
Right. I mean, that's my only point, is that we're all in favor of it, but we don't, we don't wanna have it so and that nobody that would oppose it has any, any right to oppose it.
Well, if, if, if we do nothing, we're not opening, we're not opening up the town to solar, right?
Well, we are, we are, but I don't, I don't see that we're not gonna be-
Well, it's just, it's just regulated as a structure.
Right.
With no special consideration.
But, you know, you're not gonna get the commercial solar farms-
That's not allowed.
Because that is not an allowed use.
I don't feel like that discussion is even close to being, it's for right now.
Right. But I think in, in giving it statutory status, that's a big deal. Right now, right now, it's just being dealt with, you know, under the, under the guise of this, of the definition of structure.
I think the danger is that we give it statutory status, and it comes with that, with more regulations, and that would be, that would be in defiance of this.
Then I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying this as a, you know, that this is what we should do, but to, to the point that's been brought up. Once you give something a statutory status, there are issues, and it's no longer just a structure. It's now got this status, and whether we want to or not, we have to deal with reasonable issues that will come up.
We do, we do. We have to, we have to be there now, I mean, right?
So, okay, so let me, apropos to that, under the existing, the way it's being dealt with now, for instance, how has the zoning board, or have they had to deal with, how do they interpret the lot coverage?
They go by the, the size of the panel.
Okay.
So if you have a tracker-
They're going maximum. So that's how it's being dealt with now?
Yeah, that's, and then if you have a fixed set of panels, they look at the, what the angle of the panel is, and then basically the land under the-
The diagram.
Yeah, use the diagram.
So that's the existing system, under the definition of structure?
And then, that's because it's, you know, dealt with as a structure for lot coverage, you know, your, your standard lot coverage calculations apply, and, you know, that also works well with everything, because again, it's keeping the scale of the development on the lot in line with the, the size of the lot.
So, but the point is that, that that's the existing, that's the status quo, so, and, and that's maximal interpretation. So, you know, we wouldn't be, we certainly wouldn't be increasing that, and the possibility exists, from what I've heard, that we might be increasing that, but there's simply no way that we, you know, we do have to define, I would imagine, we do have to define lot coverage.
It would, I would, I would fight you all the way and reveal it.
We're gonna have to define lot coverage, and, and the starting point is what exists now, so we're not gonna go over that, I don't think, and the debate will be-
Well, I mean, I don't know. I mean-
Not. We're not gonna go higher than, than what's already there.
It depends what the town wants. I don't-
I don't think the town is gonna want us to have higher, more, more restriction.
What, you know, another question, I don't know the answer to this, is on a, on an ordinary lot, could you supply all your power, given the lot coverage that you'd be prepared? So I mean, it, I said it possible.
I know people who, I mean, who do that.
Okay. I, I would love to see-
You made that choice about your power consumption.
Of course. Of course it's possible.
I'm hoping that solar panels would be like, from the old TV dishes that were like twelve feet in diameter. I hope the solar panels without too many years will be moot point, because they'll all be about, you know-
I remember when, what's his first name, Bolinger? Mark Bolinger came in some years ago, and he said that in time, you know, it's like the, the computer chips, just, uh, and hopefully that'll happen with the solar panels as well, it's just gets smaller and smaller.
Yeah, it wasn't too many years that those big TV dishes were around.
So, so anyway, we're gonna have to define lot coverage. That's gonna be our cha, our, a challenge, and we, the other challenge is, you know, I'm taking this from what we said tonight, that a define, the line between personal consumption and, and commercial consumption. But those are two obvious things. And I'm getting the sense from you, I just have to say this, that you care about the planet. I mean, am I right? I mean, you know, come on.
We have lots of planets, you got to-
Funny, I'm gonna put this one here.
Oh! Yeah.
I'm gonna see some crazy-
You guys, I was just in California, and I can't tell you, but like, one day, it was so clear, you could see across Lake Tahoe to the Nevada border, and the next day, you could not see from the shore. You'd make out barely a boat that was moving close to the shore. And I drove through Yosemite Park. There were fires on both sides of, of the road I was driving on.
We had that here.
Oh, I know, I know.
Yeah, there was a couple of days here that were just the-
I think it was forced out there, I'll bet.
Oh, it's still happening right now. I mean-
So, all right, so, next time, we, we have Ray, please think about these issues, because after that hearing, hopefully we'll have time, I, I really wanna have zoning amendments. I know it's challenging. It always is, is hard getting these things through, but I'd really like us to stay focused and get this, get the chapter through and, and get these zoning amendments in shape, as a goal, anyway.
Do we haul them, or solar and the-
The solar, the solar.
Yeah. And the Route 10.
Route 10, we gotta do that too. I mean, we have a lot of work. So, let's see how, how much progress we can make with the cases we're getting, and we'll, we'll just see what our workload is, but please take the time to think about these things outside, and come in with ideas for next time. All right.
And like I said, these are just definitions I, I read, modified, so feel free to critique, change.
That's great.
And is it true that we, we changed it around before, what different towns do?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we have some-
Lando, if you don't have a, I have-
Mr. Electronic.
Electronic.
One more thing, I, I'm bringing this up again for the 10 millionth time. Our site plan review, we, we have these changes that we wanna make for the, to accommodate the senior housing amendment. And each time I bring it up, the sentiment has been, well, let's push that out, because we might make some other changes, but I don't think we're gonna get around to making other changes. Why don't we just have a hearing, so that when, and if people come in for senior housing, it's all set up?
I don't even, I don't even remember the changes that-
Yeah, I was gonna say, make a list of the changes, and let's collect them.
David, at the time, took notes, and I, and I think I have notes of what the changes are. They're-
For site plan review?
For site plan review. Basically, bringing up to date the wording in site plan review to, to match with the-
Have senior housing as a thing.
Yeah. And, and that, that would initiate, like, with, with Ray, it was initiated because it's a multi, multi-welling thing, I think, or publicly, the multi-welling version. And the conversion and all of that, but I think it's irresponsible of us not to have the language in there.
I was just October 28th.
I think this will be more, I think, you know about it.
Okay, and, and do you have the language?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm not gonna be here on the 28th, so I'm gonna-
Oh, that's why you chose it? Forget it. I'm not doing that again.
Let's just get Jack Elliott.
Yeah, no, forget Jack Elliott.
At least the last time we did Mastermind, right?
Darth Vader of the, of the, of the planning board. So, anyway, what about it, kids?
What about what?
Let me dig up the language and get everything, and I'll put that as one of my to-do things.
Let's decide whether we, we wanna have a hearing, and just get that wording in there, so that it's taken care of. I think it can come back to bite us. I'd like to make a motion to end this turmoil and chaos.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor? All right. Thank you very much, everybody.
David, could you write the password for the-